And answer any question of the Planning Commission. Groups are requested to select spokesmen to express the group's concern because each side will be allowed 10 minutes to speak. Plats rezoning, revised master plans, and street renaming require a public hearing, after which the Planning Commission will deliberate and render its decision. Planning Commission members with a personal or financial interest in any petitioner's request are required to recuse themselves. Have we got any changes at all, Tommy?
No.
Okay, let's go over the minutes. Does anybody have a...I've got a couple. On item number seven, if I remember correctly, the motion was to deny was made by Mr. Reeves? Is that not correct, sir? All right. And the second was by Mr. Reed. And the vote was all the eyes that you have were correct, but the nays were both abstained.
So there were no nays and the two were abstained?
Yes, ma'am.
That's correct.
We'll go back and double check.
Okay, is anybody else...do y'all remember that? Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct, okay.
Yeah, I know I abstained.
Yes, and I know I did after you did. I copied you. All right, Tommy, you want to start us off?
Sure. First item is by Jeffcoat Engineers and Surveyors on behalf-
Oh, oh, Tommy, I'm sorry, we didn't approve...could we approve a motion to approve the minutes as amended? Is there a motion?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, Tommy?
Okay, this request is on behalf of Callie McBride Pettaway requesting to rezone one parcel of land containing .95 acres on the northwest corner of Motley Drive and Old Wataunka Highway from R-60D and B-2 to a PGH-35 district.
Okay. You want to-
Yes, I'm Guthrie Jeffcoat of Jeffcoat Engineers and Surveyors, 928 South Hull Street, As you know, this has been delayed so that the Pettaways could try to reason a little bit with some of the neighbors, and this is what we think is best for all concerned. You know, some of this property is present in his own B-2, and it could be in a convenience store put up at any time legally, but he wants all of it to be PGH-35, wants to put only six structures out there. And to me, it'd be a plus in a community that's just...that area is just growing weeds and snakes right now. So we would appreciate your affirmative on the rezoning. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone with a comment or question?
How did the public hearing go? How did the hearings go?
Sir?
How did the hearings with the neighbors? How did the hearing with the neighbors-
I have Mr. Pettaway here with me if we'd like some of those questions asked. Would you come up, Mr. Pettaway?
Am I on? Yeah.
He had a question concerning the meeting, I think it's you had.
Sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Reed?
How did the hearings go with the neighbors? How did the hearings go with the neighbors? Did you have a hear-
I had a meeting, but it didn't go too well. They, you know, for us...I've been in the community 56 years, I've been there all my life, working all my life to buy land so I can do the work. Then when I come to do the work, they complain, but ain't nothing being done. So I went to the meeting to try to work it out, but they didn't want to work it out because it started out with duplexes. They didn't want the duplexes because...so we went to the smaller houses, and they don't want the smaller house. They don't really...I don't think they really want that.
Is there someone there from the other side what they do want?
Well, let's wait just a minute. We'll give them opportunity to try, because I think there's a couple of questions here on the Planning Commission, too. Mr. Reed?
Yeah. Is there a sewer out there or septic system?
Not sewer.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, the Planning Commission? Okay, sir? Anyone wish to speak for or against?
Hello, my name is Greg Roberts. I am president of North Montgomery Neighborhood Alliance, and on behalf of the residents of Madison Park Community residing on Motley Drive, Fuller Road, and Old Wataunka Highway, we would like to express opposition to the proposed rezoning of property located on Motley Drive and Old Wataunka Highway.
Would you give your address, please, sir?
25 Motley Drive.
Okay, I'm sorry.
There are several issues that just have not been properly addressed. One thing that's overwhelming community preference for single-family housing, as indicated by the survey that we did, what we did, we surveyed the 26 closest properties to the site.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you. Ms. Roberts, it's...I promise you, it's the microphone, it's not you.
Oh, okay.
So if you don't mind just speaking loud and into it, we would appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
There's overwhelming community preference for single-family housing only. We met with Mr. Pettaway on July the 19th. This rezoning issue actually started back in May, and it was the first week of July before Mr. Pettaway came out to and actually tried to talk to the residents on the streets in Motley Drive. I talked to him on approximately the first week of July in my front yard. Mr. Pettaway, he gave us a miss...originally this started out as a townhouse, and then it was changed to a duplex, and now it's a patio garden home, all of this within a three-month period. We met with Mr. Pettaway, we were not...we were surprised because just a week before we met with him, he gave us a copy of a completely different proposal. You'll see that picture of the house and that proposal I gave you right before the survey. It's completely, completely different for a three or four-house unit that he was talking about. And when we met with him and it changed to six, we asked him what had happened, we asked him four different times what happened between the...when he came and talked to us the weeks before and now, but he did not provide us with any type of answer. Not only at that meeting, Mr. Pettaway stated that this rezoning deal is a done deal, and he repeated it numerous times to the residents that were at the meeting. And I'm not exactly sure what kind of meaning he meant by that, but maybe he can explain it himself. The neighbors also had concerns about parking, how the fencing would be, had concerns about the drainage. He's going to have to build that property up somewhat, so the excess water is going to have to fall off somewhere, either on his neighbor's property or either in the street on Motley Drive. Our initial survey of 26 property owners, 19 property owners were opposed, seven homeowners failed to return our survey. We did a follow-up survey this past week, we didn't have...not have a good response, but 13 people opposed the rezoning effort for six housing units. The effects of rezoning, it's going to have...it's going to affect the entire neighborhood. Once you start rezoning part of it, it's going to open up the whole neighborhood for rezoning. And I'm not sure that the neighborhood has not had a discussion, a neighborhood-wide discussion about something as important as this. Neighborhood stability and owner's concerns was another issue that we were concerned about. We wanted to make sure that Mr. Pettaway is going to control this property, that it would not be someone else, he won't turn around and just sell that property within a year or so. The way he has those houses all grouped together, six houses in a .95 acre lot, that's just a little too congested for most everybody. Again, I'm here on behalf of the North Montgomery Neighborhood Alliance, and those neighborhoods of Shutter Heights, King Hill, Chisholm, Madison Park, Parktown, Rosewood, and King Hill. I think I got everybody. Thank you.
Ms. Pettaway, let me ask you a question, please, sir. These lots are...are they all .95 acres? Or are they...is that just one of them?
That's the whole piece.
That's the whole piece? Okay, so you got six on a little less than an acre?
Right, right.
Okay, all right, okay. I'm sorry, someone else? Sir, would you like to speak, please, sir? Name, address?
Yeah.
All right, sir.
My name is Robert Taylor III. I grew up in Madison Park, and we still have family property there, and just two doors down from where the development will be. We operated a charitable organization for some 10 years there, the old Madison Park School Building, and we've been instrumental in getting it now owned by the city, so we expect to have activities out there, community center, et cetera. I'm not going to speak to the engineering aspects of this, I'm just going to speak to the needs of it. Here's a petition that we have here with some 90 signatories of persons that live in Madison Park, and I think the issue is Madison Park and not King Hill or wherever Personally, I know persons who would very much like to reside back in Madison Park where they grew up, but there's a problem. There's a lot of abandoned property there that is not up for sale, it's being left unattended and creating hazards for the community. I do know, if a person is going to invest in new construction, then that person is certainly going to be diligent about making sure that property is kept because it's an investment. Moreover, it's an opportunity for some young folk to move back to the community. My community is a dying community. A lot has to do with property that's our property now, nothing can be done with it, it's abandoned, and it lends itself for a lot of opportunities for crime, et cetera. I think this project would be a good one. It's...I look at it as a form of revitalization of the community. I think if there are some issues with how much it needs to be this, that, or the other, I think that can be worked out, but I certainly think that we should be very much optimistic when someone wants to invest in the community, because except for Mr. Pettaway, I don't know of anyone else that's doing that. And I just think new construction with people that's going to have pride in being able to move into some new stuff is going to have a positive effect on the community. In fact, I would hope it would affect some of the near properties, nearby properties that have been abandoned and folks have walked away from. So I'm in favor of whatever is going to be progressive, and I think Mr. Pettaway needs to be commended for making this kind of investment in a community that otherwise is sort of falling to the wayside.
Besides, there's a lot of good people out there.
Sir?
I said besides, there's a whole lot of good people out there.
Oh, yes.
Eric Motley is from there.
Yes, right down the street. Now, we have 90 folks here who are in favor of...now, that speaks for itself, the petition speaks to what the project is. These are folks that have addresses in Madison Park, and I think they should be listening to. Thank you.
Mr. Pettaway, can I ask you one more question, please, sir? He mentioned another situation that is created a lot, that really causes some problems. Do you have title to this property? Have you closed this property? You own it?
Yeah, I own it. It's in my wife's name. I own it.
Okay.
Mr. Pettaway, I need you to speak in the mic.
Yeah, I own it, but it's in my wife's name. I own it.
All right, no, I understand. I mean, the problem that a lot of times occurs in something like this is, and especially with the property that you were talking about being around, is there's so many heirs, and you can't ever get title to it, but you've got title to it-
I've got a clear title.
And you could build on it.
Right, right, right.
As soon as you could get it rezoned.
That's right.
All right, sir, thank you.
I have one more question, one question for you. When you build the patio garden house, are you going to lease them or are you going to sell them?
They're going to be leased to the peoples in the neighborhood.
Yeah, okay.
We got a problem, though. People want to stay in Madison Park, but ain't no place for them to stay there, and nobody want to sell land to the people to build in Madison Park.
Have you thought about selling them?
Well, I've been there all my life.
Yes, sir.
So I ain't going nowhere. I've been there 56 years.
Yes, sir.
And ever since I was nine years old, I've been a leader in the neighborhood. A lot of people that came in the neighborhood, they done did good, but they ran off, then nobody never came back to do nothing. See what I'm saying? And I've been in this neighborhood all the time, seeing all the broke-down houses, nobody doing that, you know what I'm saying? So now, I'm at a point now where I'm going to invest back in the neighborhood, I own in this neighborhood now. Show you how bad it done got. The last 20 years, I accumulated over nine acres of land in this neighborhood, because nobody want to do nothing with it. So I'm invested in this neighborhood. I'm not running off, man, and they know me. When I tell them something, I'm a man of my word. I tell them, that's what I'm going to do.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Erlene Wright. I'm the president of the Greater Madison Park Neighborhood Association. I live at 2761 Russell Lane in Madison Park. We want to see progressive new construction in our neighborhood. It's a good thing when that happens. You know, they're revitalizing, what is it, on Gray Avenue in Montgomery? They revitalizing that area. And like Mr. Taylor said, our neighborhood, it's old people out there, that neighborhood is dying. So if you bring new construction in housing, you're going to bring in new people. New people is going to mean more for us, more people to vote, more things to do. We're trying to revitalize our neighborhood. We have been petitioning with the city to get us a...the school turned into a community center, which was...is on the...Mr. Carr called me not too long ago and told me that that's...the engineers are ready and coming out there to assess and see what they have to do. We're trying to get sewers not only for Motley Drive, but everywhere out there, and that's in the works. So we're trying to be a progressive neighborhood, and what Mr. Pettaway is doing would only help and aid that. And we are glad to see that somebody wants to invest in Madison Park, and he is...he lives there himself. So the concerns about who's going to live there and all that, who would be more concerned than him, being that it's his property, and he also is a resident out there. I'm sure he would vet anybody very well that comes out there. So we are...the majority of the people in Madison Park, a whole lot of the residents, are in favor for new construction. Now, there are, yes, there are some that are against it, but a lot of people are against change anytime. And I think this is a young man, and he needs to be able to help us with this community, because, you know, we're all going to pass and leave this here. And for selling his property, I wouldn't sell it either. I got property out there the size of my home, and they're not building any more dirt, they ain't making no more of it. So if he can keep his land and improve it, let him do that. So I'm in favor of him rezoning that little, one little spot.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am, we appreciate it. Okay.
Is there anybody else in the audience on this item? If you're far this, if you're here, stand up. If you're against it, stand up. Mr. Roberts, I got a question for you. Come to the mic, please.
So do I.
Yes, sir.
In your presentation, you mentioned drainage, and that lot needs to be built up. Are you concerned about the water coming over on you?
On my neighbors? Once they build it up, the water's going to have to drain off onto their property, or possibly even to Motley Drive, the street.
Is it coming on them now?
No, sir.
But you said the lot would need to be built up, so that's going-
Yes, sir, if it's going to be built up.
Divert the water away from these lots? I mean, that's...you're saying two different things there.
No, I'm saying if the lot is...if they're going to landscape it and build it up, the excess water has got to come off that property some kind of way, whether it's on a neighbor's property or whether it's in the street.
Yeah, well, I don't think the city's going to let him divert water on somebody else. The inspector would catch that. That's all I got.
Okay.
Sir, before you sit down, one question.
Yes, sir.
Some of the people that did the survey were for...were against the duplex. Now that it's not going to be a duplex, and it's just garden homes like that, would any of their opinions change?
Yeah, we redid a...actually redid the survey. We didn't have a good response. It was 13, 13 people were against it, and two people were for with restrictions.
What restrictions?
They wanted...they wanted to know...I have to look at the exact form here, I'm sorry.
There's several of these marked single homes, yes.
One was the number of homes. They wanted less than six homes, but they were amenable to multiple homes, but they wanted less than six. And the others were about drainage.
Anybody else? All right, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, come on to the mic if you would, please, sir.
On the drainage part, I'm a landscaper.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
On the drainage part, I'm a landscaper. This is what I do, I deal with water. But all the water on these lots, it drains to the back, just like your neighbor do, and go out. It ain't no problem with drainage.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Everyone's...is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Look at him, he's got another one. You got another one?
Yeah, we want to plat it, too. We've got to get legal.
Hey, you're going to get it all taken care of in one night, aren't you?
Next item is by the same petitioner. It's a request for final approval of Kingdom Place Platte Number One on Northwest Corner of Motley Drive and Old Wataunka Highway. It's in a R-60D and B-2 districts.
Okay, anybody?
Yeah, we would like to plat it, because that's part of the development, as we work on the plans for drainage and other stuff through the engineering department, so we would appreciate your approval of the platting. And of course, all this, anything we do is going to be subject to the final approval of the council on the zoning, because zoning has to go to the council.
Right, okay. Anybody have a comment or a question? Anyone wish to speak for or against this? If not, a motion's in order?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, Tommy?
Next item is by Jeffcoat Engineers and Surveyors on behalf of Ms. Flossy Thomas, requesting final approval of Flossy Thomas Platte Number One on the south side of Goldbug Street, east of North Decatur Street. It's a R-60M district.
This is a very narrow, substandard lot that never got platted in the past, and we proposed to bring it in. You can't do any development unless you got it platted before the city. Then we may have to ask for some varicels. We don't know everything we're going to want to do out there, so...but there'll be no more than one structure on it. And hopefully, we can work it where with a couple of varicels, we can get a structure on it. We asked your approval to plat it, get it of record, so it can be worked with.
Is that structure a mobile home, Buzz?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, thank you.
But that structure on it is a tiny home. How long's it been there?
I don't know.
It's fairly new. And it's probably why it's coming before us now, because it probably went to ask for power. But it's what's commonly known as a tiny home. I assume you've seen it?
I have not seen it. The survey crew brought the information in, and I've not seen the structure you're talking about, Ms. Floss. Ms. Floss is supposed to be here, and I'll ask her in case questions like this arose. You want to ask her again, please?
Ms. Floss, please give your name and address first.
Flossy Thomas, 808 West Fleming Road, Montgomery, Alabama.
Yes, ma'am.
How long's that little structure been there?
Since about June.
June? It's not inhabitable now, is it?
No.
I mean, it actually looks nice, but I know that's what created you coming here.
I'd like to ask Mr. Smith or somebody in the office about the remarks. This plat is not in compliance with the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations for the district due to the lot being substandard in width and required lot area.
What's your question?
So you guys don't agree with it?
No, that's saying that it doesn't comply with the lot area for the requirement of that zoning district, but she doesn't own any more property, so she can't meet the lot area. But she doesn't own any more property, so she can't meet the lot area.
She's boxed in.
Okay, anyone else have a question on the planning commission? Anyone else wish to speak for or against? Okay, if not, a motion's in order.
Let me ask one question to clarify something and, and for my... Is this just for the tiny house? Am I understanding that correctly? Is, is that what?
It is a tiny house.
And, and you want this, uh, done for the tiny house?
It's, it's like a modular unit.
Yes.
Small modular unit.
So all of this is for that, that modular unit?
Yes, sir.
To get it in compliance?
Yes.
They can't get a CO without plating the property.
I'm sorry?
They cannot get a CO without plating the property.
Okay. All right, and there's no one for or against this? Okay, if a motion's in order?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Is that five? There was, okay. All right, thank you, ma'am.
The next item is by Flowers and White Engineering. On behalf of Frank Thomas, requesting final approval of Hyundai Crossing Platinum One on the east side of Norman Bridge Road across from the east end of Hyundai Boulevard in a B two Q district.
Good evening, my name is Frank Thomas, two eight five five Zelda Road, representing myself. KJ is in Troy tonight working on something for us, so he asked me to stand in for him.
Frank, if you don't mind, just, just present what you've, uh, what you've gotten, what you're trying to do, that's all.
So a couple of years ago, we came in and actually, what that represents is Hyundai Boulevard intersects three thirty-one. This is on the east side of three thirty-one. Uh, where you see it says Hyundai Crossing Way is an extension of Hyundai Crossing, if you will, over three thirty-one and into my property. That's a B two zoning, I believe, there. And, um, Lot One was originally on the other side of the new extension. In meeting with Aldott, Aldott was gonna require, well, they're still making me put in a northbound D cell coming in, southbound left turn going in, northbound axel coming out. But they were gonna make me come in that new Hyundai Crossing Way and go about four hundred feet to turn into the lot being on the north side. Because you would have to cross over traffic to do that, it would potentially stack traffic back south. So we're moving the lot to the other side of the road where we can come in from the south, make a right turn and immediately make a right turn into the lot and there's no stacking because you can get out of traffic immediately. So we're simply just going to the other side of the road.
Okay. Anyone with a question or a comment on the planning commission? If not, anyone wish to speak for or against? All right, a motion's in order?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Frank.
The next item is by Gonzalez Strength and Associates. On behalf of Hyundai Transis Georgia Seeding Systems LLC. It's a request for final approval of Interstate Industrial Plat, Industrial Park Plat Number Sixteen on the southernmost end of Foma Parkway, it's a M three district.
My name is Dan Allen with Gonzalez Strength and Associates, fifteen fifty Woods River Chase Drive, Hoover. Um, this is a single lot that we're requesting approval on that's located within the existing Interstate Industrial Park. This particular piece is currently just acreage and we're here tonight to, uh, request approval of this one lot.
Okay. Anyone have a question, comment? Anyone wish to speak for or against? If not, a motion's in order?
Move to approve.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, sir.
Appreciate your time.
Okay, the next item is by Thompson Engineering. On behalf of Americo Real Estate Company, requesting final approval of U-Haul Montgomery Platinum One on the northeast corner of Mildred Street and Sarah Street in a T four O district.
Good evening, my name's Johnny Holly, I'm with Thompson Engineering, twenty-nine seventy College Hill Road, Mobile, Alabama. Here tonight on behalf of, uh, U-Haul Montgomery in their effort to, uh, create a one lot subdivision. As I understand it, they were in the process of renovating an existing building on this piece of property and it was discovered that it was multiple lots. And, uh, it was asked of them to have it all combined into one lot. So that's what we're here tonight to seek approval of one lot subdivision.
Okay, anybody have a question on the planning commission or a comment? Anyone wish to speak for or against? If not, there's motions in order?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
You're going downhill when you go back to Mobile, you know?
The next item is presented by TGL on behalf of Commercial Properties, Inc. It's a request for final approval of Takala Montgomery Platinum One on the west side of Congressman W.L. Dickerson Drive, two hundred feet south of North Chase Boulevard. It's a M one district.
Yes, I am Tim Minor with Takala, which is a Taco Bell franchisee out of Best Heavil Hills, Alabama. Uh, here to request approval for the plat on W.L. Dickerson Drive for construction of a new Taco Bell.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the planning commission?
This was not already planted?
No, sir.
Okay. Any other question? Comments? Anyone wish to speak for or against? If not, a motion's in order?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
The next item by the Broadway Group. On behalf of Darnell Bennett, requesting final approval of TBG Day Street Platinum One on the northeast corner of Day Street and Air Base Boulevard. It's a M one and M three districts.
Good evening, gentlemen, my name's Deanna Heitch, I'm with the Broadway Group out of Huntsville, Alabama, two sixteen West Side Square. I am here to ask you for approval to subdivide a, just approximately six acre parcel, a little less than six acre parcel, um, on Day Street. And, uh, we are, uh, looking to, uh, commercial retail development is what I'm trying to spit out, um, eventually. And, and so hopefully two projects for the, for the property right now, um, working just to get it planted first.
Okay, is there a question or a comment from the planning commission?
Do you know what's gonna locate there?
I am under a confidentiality agreement. I have it, I have a couple of interested parties. We have not confirmed anything yet, we're working on some plans.
You always wind, all of us wind up in something like that when you get, well, you can't talk. Or you're not supposed to, everybody already knows at the end of the day.
I know, so I'm not supposed to acknowledge it.
Well, you're doing exactly.
It's awkward, I don't like that question, y'all get me with that one every time.
Okay, anybody got a comment or a question?
If I guessed the right initials, would you, uh, agree?
I'm so sorry, I couldn't hear ya.
I said if I guessed the right initials, would you agree?
I might smile for ya.
Okay, anyone wish to speak for or against? If not, a motion's in order?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? And that was four to, uh, any against? Okay, so that's four to one, so it didn't get approved.
Because for sure, can I table?
Ma'am?
Is it too late to table?
Tommy, you wanna help us on that one?
If, uh, if you don't appeal it, if you, if you just wait, wait out thirty days, we'll record, we'll sign it and you can take it and record it. Has to be a thirty day wait though.
I apologize.
If there's not a material error in here, in this, in the plat, if there's not a material error in it and, you know, the boundary survey closes, we don't have any material issue to not approve it. So the law, state law says you have to wait thirty days. And, and once thirty days expires, we can, we'll sign it and you can take it and record it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it, gentlemen.
See, now, look how easy it is in Montgomery, huh?
Say again? I didn't hear what you said.
I said, look how easy it is in Montgomery, Huntsville.
We wanna give you some more development. And I'm headed back to Huntsville, which is uphill.
Yeah, you got to go uphill, ain't ya? Thank you, okay.
The next item is by Pilgrim Engineering. On behalf of J.M. Wood Auction LLC, requesting to rezone one parcel of land, seventeen point six three acres on the south side of Ashley Road, approximately a thousand feet east of Old Summer Road from Ag One, M One and F, and flood hazard districts to a M One district.
I'm, I'm Pep Pilgrim, Pilgrim Engineering, ten two seventy Highway eighty east, Montgomery. This is the site of the J.M. One Wood Auction Company. And go, go back, go back to the previous. If you see there, part of this is zoned M One, part of it's Ag and then most of it's in the flood zone anyway. But sometime back in the nineties, there were two buildings on this site. The one that zoned M One had a building on it. They tore it down, well, actually, there were two buildings side by side. They tore it down and they redid the building on the other side, not in the M One, not realizing they didn't have the zoning. And now they, the, their bankers are saying your building ought to have the correct zoning for what you're in. I mean, it's, how we got to this point, Tonya and I talked about it, you know, how did we get to this point and not redo it twenty years ago? Sometime in late nineties or early two thousand, I don't know. Or maybe we just thought there was a building there and there was some M One zoning and it looked good and didn't really do it. But we did some survey work out there when, when we renovated the building and we found that a few years ago. So we're here to try to bring it back to standard.
Just cleaning up?
Cleaning up.
I wonder how they got a permit to do it, to build it?
I don't know. I, you know, when you, when you go out there and you look, well, that's the building and it's right in the middle of the lot, more or less, it, so you just really don't think about it. But we have more checks and balances now than we used to, so.
Okay, anybody have a comment or a question on the planning commission? If not, anyone wish to speak for or against? If not, a motion's in order?
I move to approve, uh, Mr. Chair, with the, uh, recommendations of the planning, uh, department. Planning Department have a recommendation on that.
You mean the qualifier?
Right.
So you, your, your motion is to approve with the qualifier?
Correct.
Okay.
Can you, can you specify what the qualification is?
Uh, well, and basically what the, what the, uh, planning department recommend, they said they do not object, propose, and basically I think, if I'm, if I'm wrong, Robert, that he basically want them to do exactly what they say they gonna do with it. In other words, if we go in there and we do this, then that give, give, uh, J.M. Woods grounds to do or build anything they want to right there.
So are you, are you restricting this for the auction company? Is that what I'm asking, that's what I'm asking?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Pep, is that a?
That's, that's okay, I talked to him about it and he said, we're not, we're not going anywhere. We've been here for twenty, thirty years and we're not changing.
Okay, all right.
So that's okay.
All right, so everybody understands that, it's a motion to approve, uh, with the qualifier that's presently on it, that it will remain only an auction company, okay. Um, and you're all right with that?
Yeah.
Anyone else have a comment or a question?
A second.
And that's, yeah, that was a motion.
Yes.
All right, and you got a second, let's read, second, all those in favor?
Okay.
The next item is by Pilgrim Engineering. On behalf of Johnny Moore and Sanderson LLC, requesting to rezone five lots on the west side of Sprout Drive, approximately twenty-eight hundred feet north of Edna Brick Lucas Drive from Ag One to B two.
All right, Pep, anybody have a comment or a question right now on the, on this? Pep, would you lead in for us then?
Okay, if, if you, uh, if you remember two or three months ago, there was a, someone came to ask to rezone this to M One. And Brian Sanderson asked me about it. And I said, well, Brian, I just, I just don't see, I don't know why you need M One. I mean, what you wanting to build is fine in business and business is not near as objective or objectionable. What they're proposing to do is build an office, uh, say for a home builder, a contractor like Moore Electric that's there. He'll have a small office, probably some storage in the back and, you know, they may have an outbuilding where they have storage. That's kinda like where my office is, I have an office, but I have, uh, shed in the back where I store my hubs and stakes and, you know, the, all the things we use that you don't have to pay heating and cool for. So this is a, a great, a great place for, uh, that type of business and they can easily go and, and, uh, offices like that are easily acceptable in business. And then you don't have to worry about, uh, what's happening around you. Now, the, uh, the objection last time, as I understand it, was the lady that lived behind was objecting to it and because of traffic and whatever, and, and I understand that, but you gotta have to know that Johnny Moore's been there for twenty-five years. Sanderson's been there for fifteen and her house has been there for six or five. That's not a place that you would develop for residential. So if you can't put business or something there, you'll never do. It, it's zoned for Ag, you can build a house, but you can't build a mobile home. You have to have special permission to put a mobile home in Ag District. The, uh, the building right behind, at the end of that, if you see there's a, a building there, it's, uh, woodworking dynamics. That's an eighteen thousand square foot woodworking shop. If you go to the west, quarter of a mile is Kilby Prison. If you go to the right, a quarter of a mile, it's, uh, Ohio Farrell and Dow Chemical. You go north, uh, there's Knox Kershaw Manufacturing and a railroad track. This is not a residential kinda place, it's, it's just not. It hadn't been forever. If you go south towards the interstate, you've got the, uh, Boys Industrial Park. I mean, the, uh, yeah, that's what they call it in it, Boys, you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
White building.
Yeah, but, and so if, if you look at the thing that's on there now, at the, at the top of that sheet, you'll see something that's really gray. That's where the effluent from the, uh, Ohio Farrell Plant used to go into a pond where they cleaned it. So, you know, folks, this is not residential material. This is a place where we ought to have business. I think putting retail in there is okay. I mean, the, the lake that's there adjacent to the, uh, one lot five, that was Froggy Bottom Enterprises. They dug soil out of the ground and sold it. They trucked it out, went out down Sprout Road, went, went everywhere in big trucks. So the road is more than adequate to accommodate. So, the road is more than adequate to accommodate whatever you put on it. They were there for years and years, and eventually, they ran out, and it filled up. So, it's, it's a really nice lake, so it's kind of prettied up in there, two or three people that live along there, so it's a neat place up there. Also, the front of these lots, uh, you can't see it, but there's like a 125-foot, I think, high-power line easement, runs right down Sprout Road in front of these lots. And the front of them, probably at least 25 percent's in 100-year flood, so this is, you know, this is just not great land to do anything, but I think, somebody like me or a home builder, this would be a good place to be. And this morning, I got a call from Brian saying that the lady that lived there has agreed to purchase lots 3, 4, and 5 from Johnny Moore that he owns. And she, if she does that, and they've made an agreement, then she wouldn't object to us rezoning lots 1 and 2. Now, I, I haven't talked to her, and I don't know her, so I don't have any way of telling you that, so. Okay, so, you know, we may be going for just lots 1 and 2, which is okay, I think. So, I'll, I'll pass it off and let you talk to-
Wait a minute before you do. You talking about that dirt or gravel hauled out of there? You said Lot 5, but-
Right behind Lot 5.
Aren't you talking about 9, 10, 11, and 12, that's where that lake is there? That big pond? She probably knows more about it.
Well, if you look there on what's labeled Lot 5, and, and-
Yeah, but that's not low, it's not, it hasn't been dug out.
No, it's, it's on top of a hill.
It's what?
It's on top of a hill. Isn't it?
No. No hill there.
Who? Oh, well, I was wrong, it wasn't Froggy Bottom, she's Froggy Bottom. But it was, you know, it was a bar pit. So, uh, it's behind Lot 5, she lives on Lot 7, I think. Isn't that right?
Come to the mic.
Come to the mic, please.
Name?
My name is Susan Golden, I live at 644 Sprout Drive. Um, I own all of the adjacent properties to Lot 5 and the two behind it, I don't know exactly what the lot numbers are, I'd have to look them up. Yes, I have made an agreement with Mr. Moore to purchase the, um, other three lots that he owned. And I did state that I would not object to the rezoning of Mr. Sanderson's lots, according, if we have some provisions made. There's one thing I do want to show you today, I didn't have a chance to get it developed.
That was today?
Yes. Completely over the road. There's a crossroad where all the waters approached to go, that's where it ends up, because it has nowhere to go. State-
Looks like my house today.
Is that on Sprout?
Yes, sir. The state owns a good bit of the property around this area, um, and they do not maintain the beaver situation. So, therefore, it causes water backup. Um, behind the Woodworking Dynamics place that he was talking about today, part of that's owned by the city, and it is full of beavers, they have dammed it up. Today, on my other lot behind my house, it was completely flooded because of that situation. I don't have an objection if we can just get this worked out, so there's something that we can do. Because you go in and you build a building, you put asphalt, you put concrete down, there's going to be more water runoff, and there's nowhere for it to go now. And it's flooding on my property. It's, most of it drains a lot to my fish pond.
It looks like Sprout Drive has been recently paved, is that correct?
It has, but they did not do anything to the sides of the road, they went in and put dirt in, but it's all washed away now because of the flooding situation. You know, if, if there's a small business there that, you know, we don't have a lot of truck traffic and that type thing, then I don't object to it. But I still think there needs to be some, some kind of restriction to water, because there's no sewer there, there's no city water, there's no fire protection. And you put a big building out there, and it catches on fire, then it's going to spread to everything else out there. One other thing, I did a survey of how many residential lots are around there, and it's a higher percentage residential than it is business. I know he was stating that there was more business there, but on Sprout and a little bit of Edna Break, it's primarily residential, anyway.
Okay, so you want to state exactly what you're requesting that would be a qualification?
Well, the first one, they said they were going to put a retention pond in, if they build there, to help, you know, control any water runoff. Personally, if they want to do that, you know, to help the water runoff and make sure that they're not, these lots, Mr. Moore went in when he bought them originally, and there was a big mound of dirt there where they had had overburden from them digging out the ponds. He went in and leveled it out, even with the road, but then it all slopes backwards. So, those lots now, they're leveled to a certain extent, but if you go on the backside of them, that's where all the water stands and where it's flooding. So-
What, what is the proposal that we're making, Pep? Do you know? Uh, that we're trying to make? What, 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 what is the proposal, evidently, y'all are somewhat in agreement?
Microphone, microphone. Pep? Microphone.
Oh, okay. We want to rezone it to business, B2.
What lots?
Uh, in this case, it would be the lots 1 and 2, what are you looking at? If you look up there, it's the-
Lots 1 and 2.
Those two right there, yes.
Ma'am, are there any restrictions on those two lots that you want to qualify it with?
I don't know why we would qualify.
I'm, I'm just, I'm asking, I'm, I'm confused as to what we're trying to do.
No, I, I, you know, I don't know why you would qualify it, I'm-
You just want to rezone those two lots?
I just want to rezone those two lots, I, I understand about the water, but Sprout Drive is in 100-year flood. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I, I have, I have the map, it's in 100-year flood. The land on the other side of Wood, Woodworking Dynamics is in the 100-year flood. The reason he's built where he is is because he's not in 100-year flood in that little corner. So, those- No, yours not, yours, see, it kind of, it kind of goes uphill, Sprout Drive's low, and behind it's low, and it goes uphill to where everybody's built, which makes sense. Uphill being, see where Lot 12 and 7 are at the top? That's kind of uphill, and where that 12 and 14 are written is where Woodworking Dynamics is built. And then you can see the blue over to the left, that's 100-year flood. I mean, there's only limited amount of space you can build on, we'll have to put a detention pond in anyway, we don't have a choice about that. Uh, I don't know how you can qualify it.
Well, that's, well, I didn't, I, maybe I was using the wrong word.
Okay.
That the retention pond, I didn't know whether you were requiring a retention pond, or-
Well, the ci- city requires that.
Well, that's, that's what I was trying to, I couldn't figure out what she was, where she was going. Okay.
We would have to, of course, they'd have to have septic tanks, there's no sanitary, but we would have to-
Okay.
Put detention in.
Okay.
And there's really very little land on those lots to build on. Out of three acres, it might be an acre and a half that you can build on, and it's uphill.
Okay.
I understand the, the issues, but the Sprout Drive-
Ma'am, make sure you have no objection to what he's wanting.
Not on those first two lots, as long as, like, you know, it's required for that. I have one other question, um, if they're wanting to rezone these two lots to business, why aren't the businesses around there required to be zoned business?
Required, I, I missed that, what-
Pre-existing.
Okay, they're wanting to rezone these two lots as business.
Commercial.
That won't mean any, nothing else around there is business, the businesses are there is on agriculture.
I, I don't know, is that right?
Pre-existing situation.
Well, if you remember, it was 15 years ago or so, the city annexed, uh, Ohio Farrell Plant, because they wanted the tax dollars, and it goes down one of these streets. A lot of this wasn't in the city's planning jurisdiction at that time. So, they are existing non-conforming, basically. Now, Sanderson's lot, it's zoned, uh, uh, what, agriculture. You could probably, he, he, that's a horticulture business, you could put that in agriculture. Moore Electric's, no, that wouldn't go. But Sanderson probably qualifies those others, they're not zoned correctly.
If you only want to rezone 1 and 2, why don't you submit 5 lots?
Well, because Mr. Moore wanted to rezone, he owns the other three. But until today, that's what we were going for, until the neighbors got together and solved the problem.
They've bound those three lots, there's-
So, so what you're asking, Pep, is to rezone, as of this moment, to rezone 1 and 2 only? Right?
That's right, we'll, we'll take 3, 4, and 5 out.
Right.
We just want lots 1 and 2, 3, 4, and 5, she will have-
Will remain, well, whatever, but it's to remain what it is right now, you just want 1 and 2?
Right.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
1 and 2.
Yes, thank you.
1 and 2.
That was hard, but I think we understand it now.
I got it.
It took a while to get there.
Okado, thank y'all. Is there anything else? If not, we adjourn.